Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 28th, 2020 work session of the Pennfield Planning Board. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel, 1303. The meeting will also be later transcribed. With that, Lori, I think you're with us. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Bastian?
Bill, you gotta unmute.
Okay.
Kenauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Burton?
Burton, unmute.
Burton here.
All right. Great. Go ahead.
Nurseinger?
I'm the last one. Okay, here.
No? O'Connor?
O'Connor, here.
Weiser?
Weisner, here.
Hey Gray, here.
Okay. We don't have minutes yet from our meeting of May 14th, so they are a little more challenging and complicated this time, but hopefully we'll have them next time. We have a few tabled applications to go through. Zach, if you'd like to start talking about those, it'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just go in the order of which we had public hearings last meeting. The first one is the Starbucks application on Route 250 at Parkside Commons Plaza. So here, one of the, I'm bringing up a plan showing vehicular circulation internally of the plaza. This was one of the primary concerns of the board.
Share screen.
Yo. Can they not see the projector, Dave? Oh, not on that side.
Yeah, I can't see it.
All right. Uno momento. That's getting transcribed.
Yeah. Word for word.
I've done worse. All right, here we go.
I can see the screen now on the Zoom call.
Okay. So we are showing the traffic circulation internal flow map that the applicant presented, and the board had some concerns about this. As a result, I'm gonna try and turn on one of my buttons here, one second. Navigation zoom, give me you. This plan is showing us how vehicles will move around in the plaza based on the layout for the Starbucks and its drive-through configuration, its new parking area, and also a new access lane to the north of, was it, I think it's Valvoline there?
Pleasure.
As a result of the meeting, the applicant did provide us, it was today, I just uploaded it to Google Drive. Again, I don't expect everyone to see this right now, but we did get an analysis from the applicant from Bergman, who they have been working with throughout this process. It does provide a summary of the project and on the final page of it, an analysis of that. I'm gonna pull that up on my screen. I probably gotta zoom out here. I reviewed this today. Our engineers will review this as this goes on. We wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that we do have it and there is time to review it, but there are, basically the summary of this is that the proposed layout should accommodate all the vehicles necessary in the drive-through. I can't really speak to those uncertain times, those unique times such as now where a drive-through is heavily relied on and traffic is queuing probably past any drive-through lane right now, but this kind of speaks to normal conditions. It does, it does reference COVID, but again, it does show that this can accommodate 12 vehicles, which exceeds the normal queues. That studies show eight to 10 in these drive-throughs, so it's, again, this drive-through is designed to be longer than normal.
So are they saying that the typical Starbucks, the average Starbucks that has a drive-through queues for eight to 10 vehicles?
Yeah. Yes. And this one can fit up to 12, stacking behind the order menu and then between the order menu and the pickup window.
Okay.
The other part of this was regarding internal circulation. This, their analysis, their consultant says by providing the parking, by transport, you're basically transforming this access road that went from south to north, north to south, along the frontage of the property. By transforming this more into a parking area as opposed to just a pass-through, you now have visual deterrents to slow you down, along with the landscaping they're proposing to try and basically kind of pinch the area, if you will, as you're driving through it. There are more things that make you more aware of your surroundings as opposed to just racing towards your destination. I think one of the good recommendations that came from this was to perhaps use the slow markings on the pavement as another visual cue. Originally, they were looking at speed humps in this area. Our staff actually said, let's pull those out. We know it's gonna be a maintenance nightmare. Maybe, they're already proposing pedestrian yield signs, crossing signs at both ends of the parking areas, here and here, but perhaps the board might want to consider the slow markings as well on the site plan. That's what I have on that. Does anyone have questions right now?
Yeah, anybody? Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm okay with it. I think the, for years, this has been an access road, and, you know, during the construction and upon completion, it's gonna be now, in essence, a parking lot. And it's gonna take some time for people to adjust to that. So, one thing I was thinking about, because I read the traffic study and I agree with it, but is there anything we can do on a temporary basis when they first open, you know, flashing lights or something, so people understand that this is no longer a road you can race down at 15 or 20 miles an hour? It's basically a parking lot aisle like you would experience at Target or Wegmans or one of those other places.
Yeah, you wonder.
My major concern is when people come in off of 250 at the southern exit there, they're gonna turn the corner and there's not a lot of distance between that intersection and the first parking space, and if someone's pulling out, backing out, you know, I don't wanna see accidents. Plus, you've got the handicap location or parking locations on the left. So if there's anything we can do on a temporary basis until people can adjust to this, I think that might be helpful.
Okay. All right. You know, I wonder if there's a temporary speed hump or something that would work or something like that.
Or some new signage, perhaps. O'Connor, if you're listening, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that in terms of a temporary solution for the new traffic, the new layout there?
I'm thinking if they did like maybe the slow markings, or at least maybe put some visual effects on the pavement, that might bring, you know, the attention to the driver to help slow them down. So I think that might be a good idea. I'm not sure about the speed bumps because, I don't know, they, originally, they had them only on one side of the lane, and then we figured they were just gonna drive around, so that we thought that would cause another issue.
Right.
You know, in, around towns, sometimes when they change the speed limit or they make some modification, they put up that temporary flashing light that says, you know, maybe at five miles an hour or 10 miles an hour, to adjust it to new speed, or something along that line. And maybe for the first month, it doesn't have to be a long time, but just to let people know that they can no longer zoom through there, because they do travel through there pretty quickly right now. And it's gonna change the traffic pattern there a little bit, and I, you know, I think that would be helpful, but how we do that, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So what I can suggest, Bill, is we can communicate that to the applicant and have them submit something to the town engineer for his final sign-off.
Okay, that sounds good.
As part of that process. That way, we leave it to them, to leave it to the engineers to have that conversation.
Yeah.
I'm just looking, I pulled up the latest site plan too, and we can, if you want to make it a condition, as part of a revision to this plan is to add those slow markings, you certainly can. I know one thing that we see right away when we drive in is a pedestrian crosswalk, so I know that's gonna be one cue, but like you said, some sort of temporary solution might be in play here, and I think we can let the engineers sort that out.
Well, and even in that, there could be rumble strips or, you know, the sort of recessed, it's like when you fall asleep and run off the throughway.
In the crosswalk design?
Do that, but.
That, that's a good idea.
You know those, almost like divots that they put in the shoulder?
Whereabouts on?
On the throughway.
No, 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 on this, on this site. I hit one today, I know, I'm aware.
Have you ever driven on the throughway?
A couple times, a couple times. It's a popular destination.
No, what I'm thinking about is a crosswalk, because that would be something that would probably have the effect that Bill's looking for. Also, probably wouldn't be anywhere near the maintenance nightmare that a speed hump would be. It would probably be pretty reasonable to put in.
It would be permanent, for sure. I mean, they could, I mean, they could fill it in.
I don't think that would be necessarily a bad thing with a crosswalk.
Well, I mean, if you're bringing, if that's where you're gonna be sending people from 250 or anywhere else.
That, I think we should certainly consider that unless there's some sort of major objection from engineering staff and other people.
Okay. Yeah, I'll pass it on to all parties.
Okay. Rest of the board, if, let's start with Kenauer. Any comments?
Yep. I, I agree with Bill. If, if that road can be marked slow, I know in that plaza back when the yogurt place was open, they did have slow indicated right on the pavement in front of the plaza. So I think that would be, I agree with that. I think that would hopefully help the, the speed of the traffic there.
Okay. Terry, tidings?
Yeah, I agree that, leave it up to engineering to work it out with those guys. Both the slow signage and the bumps that you mentioned, I think are a good idea in the crosswalk also. Thank you.
Burton?
Yeah, I agree with Bill too, but I'd like to see some tactile markings in the pavement. I would prefer not to see any other signage that could have the opposite effect of perhaps obscuring your vision of cars coming and going.
So are you saying something like the rumble strips or that in the crosswalk and the slow markings on the pavement itself, but not signage temporarily like Bill's suggesting? Is that what you're saying?
Actually, the applicant's engineer had a good suggestion, if you want to pull it up on the chat.
Oh, didn't know.
Let's see where we are here.
Just pulled it up on here. Solar powered flashing. James, James and Fred are on, if you want to ask him to elaborate on that, since we're, we're trying to avoid the chat box, just to let everybody know. AJ, we can, James is there if he wants to enable his microphone.
Yeah, James, if you want to jump in here and.
Sure, absolutely. This is James Kritikos with BME. Fred and all these here as well, the applicant. Me and Fred were just discussing on the side, you know, we'd be happy to do, we have the pedestrian crossing signs in there. They definitely make solar-powered, flashing pedestrian crossing signs, and we can just put those where the two locations are as a permanent feature. That way, there's always some kind of flashing indicating light. It's in line with what you guys requested of us, and I think Fred wouldn't have any problem doing the slow marking signs. I know traffic and pedestrian safety is of the utmost importance for this project.
Okay. All right. Fred, do you have anything to add, or you, go ahead?
So James, James can attest to this, but we, we often will add those features on the early stages of the plan design, and oftentimes, it's the municipality engineer or review team that, that removes those technologies. So I'd be very excited to be able to use the, a combination of both the solar-powered, illuminated, traffic mitigating signs with the narrative in combination with some treatment through the, through the crosswalks. The, there's the traffic, the traffic pattern that we're gonna watch most intently as it relates to anything speed generating is gonna be that southbound traffic, but I have, I have been excited to use this technology on some of our projects where it's been, it's been removed, so I'd be happy to make that a permanent feature. And obviously, this is something where we're gonna be living with this, learning this, and in addition to those features, we do have several other phasing of traffic mitigating and pedestrian safety additions, which I can, I will chronicle an email sent to James to get to your team, to Zach.
Okay. All right. Did you have something to say, Zach?
Not on that matter, no.
No. How does the board feel about that and, you know, I guess Jim and Bill? Bill, do you want to comment on Jim's suggestion, and Jim, do you want to comment on everybody else's follow-up suggestions? Bill first.
You mean as far as something that's tactile that will get the driver's attention? That Jim recommended?
Yeah.
That Jay, you recommended, like the rumble strips? I think that's a good idea. I think they're low maintenance or maintenance-free after they're installed. I could be wrong, I'm not sure, but I like that idea a lot. I'm not familiar with these flashing pedestrian crossing, solar-powered signs. Jim brought up a good idea that we do not want to block any views. So whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's not too distracting for the drivers and that, but it does get attention and slows them down. But I, again, I've never, maybe I've seen one, but I can't recall.
Okay.
I've seen them.
Burton? You gotta unmute.
Nope, we're missing him.
Jim, you're muted.
Still muted.
Never heard him silent before.
Jim, Jim, you're muted.
Unmute your microphone.
Yeah, why don't we ask the applicant to submit some cut sheets and a revised pavement marking plan here?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
And we can incorporate the improvements that we like into our approval resolution.
Agreed. Agreed.
And just, just real quick, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to respond, but with regards to Bill's comment, the neat thing about these flashing signs is they have, they have two modes. They have a constant mode where it's, where it's always illuminated or, or flashing, which we could use for the period of time that you identified as temporary, and then they have a mode where they're manual, so if somebody's at the crosswalk and they need to cross, they can depress the button and it'll illuminate the signs. The most recent application of this is on, that I've seen locally, is on Main Street in Canadega, and, and very high speeds carried down there, and it's been quite effective, I've been told by the city planner, so it's, it's a technology I'm excited to, to use on one of our properties.
Okay. So if you guys could submit those ideas and concepts, and then next, the next meeting we'll review them and decide whether, you know, which ones we want to move forward with, if that's all right.
Bill?
Yes.
If you want to see one of those crosswalk flashers, there's one at Harris Hill School right across from Wegmans, so it's right around the corner from this site.
Perfect.
Those were installed some time ago.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Okay. What else we got?
I just wanted to recap from the rest of the project, if the board was satisfied with architecture.
Mm-hmm.
There weren't any major concerns when we were talking about it. We had a video fly-through that did a wraparound of the building, seemed like everybody was supportive of the materials that have been identified. We got all the lighting cut sheets for all the fixtures that came through, including the bollards, the new light poles, the building mounted, so that kind of covered all those items. Landscaping, this has been reviewed by our landscape consultant, and I haven't heard anything bad about it. He was satisfied with the, with the plans and just wanted to make sure that the patio was protected from vehicles, which they've addressed. One other item, the zoning board of appeals did approve the applicant's request for less setback to the DOT right-of-way on Route 250, so that went through on May 21st, and zoning boards, they're done with the zoning board on that element. They will have to go to the zoning board for their signage proposal, most likely. They do have to submit a sign package to the building department so they can review it and determine if it's gonna go to the zoning board or not. Most likely will have to, just the nature of most commercial businesses, but that's their responsibility now to do that. I don't have anything else on that. It sounds like there's just this matter of the pedestrian crossing and how it's illuminated or finally signed. I'll leave it to you, board members, how you, what direction you want to go with this.
All right, guys, you, is everybody else comfortable other than the things that we discussed tonight? Bill, you want to start?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think it's a good project. Traffic was my major concern, but yeah, I'm okay with the architecture, the landscaping, signage, that'll have to be determined by the ZBA, but yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied with, you know, what we talked about tonight and the project.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I like the project.
Terry?
Yeah, I think it was, I'm most out with it. Thank you.
All right. Bill, do you want to move to table and maybe direct staff to start preparing an approval resolution for next meeting?
Okay, yeah. I'll move the table, and we'll ask the staff to prepare an approval resolution, but seed of the traffic information from the applicant, you know, how they're gonna slow it down. So we've kicked a few things around, I think we need to settle on that, but yeah, I'm good to go with the tabling and the approval resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Kenauer seconded. Just a request downstairs, I think some of the people are having a hard time hearing our mics here in the town hall. So Lori, can you call a vote?
Yep. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Thanks, guys. Zach?
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you too. Have a good weekend.
Thanks, Fred. See you.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
See you. Item number two.
Yes, moving on to that, it's our subdivision project at, known as Forest Ridge Subdivision, 72 lots under cluster, cluster layout under Town Law 278. Just today, we received the applicant's revised plans. That's something our engineering department's gonna look at. It's in response to the PRC memo that was sent out for this project. The applicant previously already gave us written responses to that. They were able to accommodate to all the comments, basically. Anything left over is pretty technical, but let me just pull this up just so everyone sees. We had a few public comments that came in. Those were included in your drop leading up to this meeting. Staff, that included our responses to those public comments as well. They were good comments, good conversations from the public. A lot of it was just education. Unfortunately, during this part of the public hearing, that's when we noticed that echo come through sometimes, as it, and then, you know, made it a little difficult for people to start understanding some of the technical details of this, drainage, wetlands, so on and so forth. So we explained that to those who were interested. Again, good conversations with those people. I'm just pulling up the plan here so you guys can see it again. Overall layout of everything, large conservation easement included in this, dedication of lands to the town for stormwater management. The applicant did an excellent job kind of reviewing what the drainage situation would be for this project, where it will flow during certain rainfall events. They covered that during the public hearing. I think they more than addressed it. Traffic has not been an issue from the county DOT. They are the ones that control both Jackson and Plank Road, so they control those intersections and those permits that will be associated with those. The thing, the couple items I do have to ask the board is, as this project goes forward, is a sidewalk waiver. The applicant has requested one for this project. They're currently showing, oh my God, hang on, one second.
Sidewalks on one side, right?
Sidewalks on one side, and internally, on the south and west side of the road, trying to highlight it here a little bit, it's the dark edge as we flow through here.
South and east.
South and east, sorry. Thank you, AJ. So they're requesting a waiver to, for relief from installing the sidewalks on the opposite side of, of the road as well as the frontages of the property. They have submitted a waiver request to the town board. We just wanted to capture your thoughts on that waiver request.
Personally, speaking for myself, I, I don't have an issue with it. I think sidewalks on one side is a good idea, and then funds to go into the general, the sidewalk fund, offsetting the other side, would be a lot better use of concrete and.
Yeah, there's other gaps to fill in.
Other places that would do better, so I'll ask everybody else on the board. Jim, why don't you start off?
Yeah, so that seemed to be a fairly common theme with people whose properties neighbor this site, not so much not having sidewalks on both sides of the road in the subdivision, but whether or not there's a real viable option to get some sidewalk extensions out on Jackson.
Right.
Zach, did you get a chance to talk to Mark and Mike about that?
Not yet, but we are aware that that's been a request of people in the area. There was that one comment that came in from a resident on Waybridge Court, which is the subdivision across the street to the south with 13 lots there. We envision that a connection will, at some point, go down Jackson Road to Veterans Memorial Park here, so. So, um, it's a matter of timing and going through a petition process and reviewing the infrastructure in that area. Part of that subdivision included, uh, an installation of sidewalks on the frontage of the property in lieu of installing them internally along with a waiver fee. So we do have some existing sidewalks in the area to connect those gaps in the future. Um, but again, but as AJ said, a sidewalk waiver fee for this one under our current policy would certainly, uh, help go towards filling in some gaps in the future.
And the applicant still has a couple of hurdles to overcome before we can approve this project, correct?
Regarding? I mean, right, right now, Jim, the only thing, um, that we as staff need to look at is these revised plans they submitted. Um, part of their presentation was expressing that they don't have any, um, large concerns with the comments made by staff in terms of the PRC memo. Uh, a lot of the revisions they had to make were for, uh, swales and inlets on some properties and just the overall layout for that. Um, again, most of it was technical. So these plans are in relatively good shape, in my opinion, but again, we just got these today, so I'll leave it to our engineers to take a look between now and the next meeting.
Right. I only bring that up because that was perhaps the second most common concern expressed by, uh, some of the neighboring property owners, you know, with respect to, uh, wetlands and stormwater and drainage.
Right, right. And that, that's, and we've tried to, um, speak with those neighbors. Uh, I know I've, I've had a couple of phone calls and a couple of emails to explain the situations and, uh, I know our staff is relatively comfortable with the layouts shown that protect the wetlands and provide the necessary stormwater management and all three of the facilities are proposing, um, to control and treat, uh, stormwater runoff generated from the site.
Yeah, I just, I just think, given the complexity of this from a stormwater standpoint and all the changes that have been made and the comments we've gotten, it would be great if we could add a finding to our eventual resolution that says that, uh, that, uh, town staff has reviewed all of these improvements and all the revisions to the plans and they're consistent with best engineering practice.
Oh, certainly, certainly. That, that would certainly go into the resolution and, and make sure that's captured based on, uh, these latest set of plans.
So other than that, AJ, I'm, I'm, uh, very happy with the revisions that were made and, uh, the improvements that were made that I think will, uh, make this a, a lot more viable project in terms of the stormwater, the drainage and, um, not having to, uh, not having the town have to field phone calls about flooded basements.
Right. Okay. Terry, anything?
No, I'm go with it.
Bill?
I'm, I'm good. Um, I like the idea of the one, you know, sidewalk waiver for the interior and, and actually for Plank Jackson, um, yeah, the waiver money can, I'm sure the town has got, uh, higher priorities for sidewalks, but yeah, I think it's a good project.
Okay. Bob?
Um, looks good. I just had one question on the sidewalk waiver. If it's one side, how is that typically handled in the cul-de-sac? I don't know if Zach can, um, comment on that?
I think it usually goes about halfway around, doesn't it?
Oh, and that, um... We, uh, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we just measured the remaining frontage that's not, um, included on the plan.
Yeah, I mean, typically I think with, it depends on what side they want the sidewalk on that ends where the cul-de-sac is, but generally we'll just kind of pick a point, um, for it to end and then, you know, it's essentially located so everybody in the cul-de-sac can just easily access it.
Okay. So it, it sounds like it doesn't go around the cul-de-sac, but ends just before the radius.
Yeah, somewhere typically, but makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, I think we may be in a position to also get an approval resolution started. Jim, you good with, uh, moving forward on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for, uh, staff to prepare a draft approval resolution.
And then maybe to table?
Table.
And to continue table until, uh, till we sort out the final engineering review.
Okay.
I'll second. Bastian?
Okay. Lori, did you get those?
Got it. Um, Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. So the resolution passed, uh, continue table. And let's move on to, uh, item number three, Zach.
Just going to pull up the plans.
And we can thank Matt for hanging in there and wish him well for the weekend. He can go enjoy his family.
All right. So our third and final tabled application is for Stafford Park. This is the, uh, 20-lot subdivision at 1918 Jackson Road. Again, a cluster subdivision, um, using Town Law 278. This, uh, again, was something we had, uh, our greatest public input during the public hearing. Uh, AJ did a great job capturing that and Penfield TV did a great job facilitating it. Um, we have had several emails since then. Uh, again, staff responded to those and we provided that to you in the drop along with all, a copy of all the public input, uh, that was submitted the night of the meeting. So we do have that all on record now. Uh, these plans that I have up on the screen, these were submitted on the 22nd of May. These were to, um, capture revisions based on the PRC's memo and the board's, uh, input and review process following the May 14th meeting. Um, some of the things that came out of this meeting, uh, I think one of the, one of the hot topics, if you will, was, um, tree preservation. What do we see? You know, what will, what will we see around this site once it's built? They're proposing a 20-foot buffer, um, around the site using the existing vegetation. Uh, obviously anything that is dead or at risk of coming down in terms of tree species, those will be removed out. You don't want any liabilities there. They're proposing new buffer plantings up at the frontage of the site. Uh, that will also help with blocking headlights at the early morning or evening hours of anyone exiting the site. Obviously, when you get to the front, you get to the front, but however, on your entrance as you approach the intersection, these plantings will help shield that. Um, we have a consolidated stormwater management area on the town-owned property adjacent to the site, which was approved by the town board to be there, subject to engineering's, uh, sign-off on the final designs. It'll bring it to compliance and upgrade the existing facility, uh, that was already there. It kind of just acted as a dry pond and then it just flooded as rainfall took place, which it was designed to do back then. Uh, we'll have a better situation here with a new, uh, stormwater managed facility from this project before it enters the redesigned area that was formerly the dry pond, dry pond. Um, they are showing street trees all throughout this. They're attempting to preserve some of the Christmas trees that were out there that were part of the former Christmas tree farm. Traffic, uh, they did provide us with IT standards for trip generations, uh, on Jackson Road based on site distance and speed traveled and the size of development. We saw those, uh, calculations come through at, uh, peak hours for the AM and the PM. Both were well within compliance of what we're used to for subdivision of this nature in terms of the number of cars. Um, there are a couple outstanding items that engineering is looking at in terms of surrounding drainage.
Let me, let me stop you there for a second and just clarify that.
Go ahead.
What you said about the traffic.
Yep.
Uh, did you mean, like, with the, the projected entering and exiting that they've provided, you said it's well within what we've typically seen in the town? So what that says is that, uh, the average subdivision based on the number of houses and the percentage of cars leaving and, and arriving, entering and exiting at various times, this falls in line with what we've seen in other subdivisions based on the, the number of lots and the number of cars projected?
That is correct. And, and using the IT standards, I just pulled it up on the screen, uh, they're showing their estimates for a 20-lot subdivision. IT standards are what we base our calculations on too. Uh, it's not just something they just pulled out of.
Right, but we also do counts from time to time, right?
Yes, that's on the road. Yep. Uh, and to follow up on that, AJ, we, we don't have any recent data for traffic counts on that part of Jackson Road. Um, obviously wouldn't do us any good right now to, to perform them because of the COVID-19 and irregular traffic patterns, uh, but it is something that I'm sure our engineering department will be doing once things start to return to normal.
Okay.
Um...
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that they weren't underestimating.
True, yeah.
You know, oh yeah, we're going to go on the super low side or something, that it's a, it's a reasonable number.
Oh, yeah. If, again, looking at the, looking at the data here, you know, AM peak, which is between seven and nine, you're showing 15 trips per hour. Uh, and then we're showing 20, 20 trips per hour at the PM peak from four to six, and that's at a given hour time. So it's not to say between four and six is 20, it's at an hour during that timeframe. Um, you're looking at 15 and 20.
Yeah, so three to four minutes you have a car every three or four minutes?
Precisely.
If you average it out for the hour, you might have two and one minute and then 10-minute wait or something.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Um, trying to think if there was anything else that popped into my head for this.
I mean, this, I know that a lot of people that made comments commented on sidewalks and so on on Jackson Road.
Yep.
They obviously don't have control over that, nor do we specifically, but it would be great to put a bug in the ear of the sidewalk committee and have this on their radar.
I, I agree. I think, you know, given the, given what's around the area on Jackson Extension and Wayland, there's, there's sidewalks there. Uh, this is a good length of road. It would take, based on how we install sidewalks at the rate which we do now, it would take time, but I think it needs to make its way onto a list, like you said, so that we are paying attention to it and it becomes a priority in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
Um, speaking of sidewalks, this project also has asked for a full sidewalk waiver. This would be no sidewalks internally and no sidewalks on the very short frontage section that they have. Uh, it's a dead end, no outlet cul-de-sac road. It would be a dedicated road in this, uh, obviously as part of this. Um, but they have requested for a full waiver. Yep. Yep. So I guess at this point I can ask for the board's input on that since we're, since we're talking about it.
It's a really short cul-de-sac. I personally don't have an issue with that. I don't know how everybody else feels. Terry?
Well, like we just spoke about the other one, uh, you know, I guess I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I leave it up to the town board, but you know, here we are waving one side to keep it, uh, similar to the other tracks. This is what 20 subdivision. I, I don't know. I don't know if I really want to go down that road myself. If you want to start, you know, letting them go completely with no sidewalks when we're trying to, uh, put more sidewalks in the town, so.
Okay, so you're coming down on, you'd like to have them on one side or both sides or?
Yeah, I think one side would be good. I mean, uh, that's what we do with the other, uh, tracks presently, to my knowledge. I don't know how many we've, uh, been waving altogether, but I guess I, I'll leave it up to the town board, whatever they want to do.
Okay. All right. How's everybody else feel about, about that? Uh, let's start with, uh, Bob.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure for a development with the fewer number of houses still. It's 20 houses. I would think, um, I guess I'd like to see a sidewalk on one side.
On one side?
Yeah.
Uh, Bill?
Um, I, I think that, I, well, I don't think they need sidewalks. I live in a much larger development. We have no sidewalks. It was built, you know, 50 years ago, 60 years ago and, uh, people drive really slow. Here it's a very short road. It's got a few homes. It's not a big development. So I, I'm okay with a sidewalk waiver, a complete sidewalk waiver.
Jim?
Yeah, I agree with Terry. I mean, this community has a long-standing history of the sidewalk policy. We go out of our way to promote sidewalks, uh, to, to bank money for, uh, tying our sidewalks into different, uh, arteries in the town. I, I don't see why, uh, they can't put sidewalks in on one side.
Okay. All right. So it's kind of, uh, three, four, two, not that concerned. So, uh, let's put that in the minutes that, uh, the board overall prefers to have sidewalks on one side.
Yep.
And it is up to the town board.
Correct. This will go to the town board.
Obviously, we can't, we don't make the final choice.
Correct. But we can communicate to the town board that your conversation took place and that there was support.
Right.
You know, three of the board members at least, uh, there was support for, um, one side of sidewalks internally.
Right.
And we'll leave that to the town board to make that decision. The other element of this... Oh, man, there you go. Uh, mind if I ask the applicant a question, AJ?
No, not at all.
Uh, Fred or Rudy, if you're there, I have a question for you. Um, in these revised plans, are you removing the landscape cul-de-sac?
Uh, can you hear me, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, uh, board members for your time this evening. Uh, I have submitted, if you remember, some of you remember, uh, the last section of, uh, Cranberry Cove, uh, the, uh, the town board did allow me to do a cul-de-sac and doing just a paved cul-de-sac is the least expensive way, but if you take a gander at any of these cul-de-sacs, they just become unsightly, they contain gravel in the wintertime. So they allowed me to do, uh, a landscape cul-de-sac at the last section of Cranberry. We, we had it simple at the time. It was a grass perimeter with one focal tree and it worked out fine. We had a simple deed restriction that I take care of it till the last house is sold and then we deeded it to one of the property owners to maintain or remove at my cost. Uh, what we did in Greece, we amplified that a little bit. We did a, a paved cul-de-sac or a landscape cul-de-sac. We used cobbles. We put a, uh, three focal trees and, and a five-rock, large boulder, oriental landscape thing with lighting and it turned out quite beautiful. So I would love to petition the proper board to, uh, allow us to do that. I would be very happy to, we have language for our deeds that a homeowner takes care of it and/or put an amount in the letter of credit that if ever it's a nuisance in the future, we would come in and remove it and pave it. But I, I don't see that happening and I think in this development with the, uh, pricing of where the market's going to go, uh, it would be a beautiful aesthetic to have that instead of an 80-foot gravel, uh, paved parking lot. So that's my pitch, but I'm happy to cooperate with whatever the board feels.
All right. Thanks, Rudy. I, you guys all know my history on this stuff. I totally agree with Rudy on this.
I do too.
I, I mean, I, personally, I hate the way those wide-open cul-de-sacs look and I'll probably never have my street paved, uh, plowed again, but that's the way it goes.
But yeah, that's, I think the way, I would have it, too. I don't know what the rest of the board members feel, but I think that's the best way to go, and they've done a nice job in the past also, so.
Yeah, how about, let's start with Bob.
Yeah, I mean, I think that sounds good. It sounds like even if the maintenance is deeded to one of the properties, it sounds like from Rudy's experience that, you know, it's, it's taken care of. I guess that would be, you know, my only concern, and it sounds like there's some provisions in place that if it's not maintained, then it goes to Plan B and then the developer then fixes it.
Right, okay. Bill?
I'm in agreement with Rudy. I like the idea of landscape cul-de-sac. I think it adds a lot to the development. So, yeah, I'd like to see it landscaped.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, they do it in a lot of other communities. There are lots of planting and other improvement actions for laying down materials that are resistant to salt spray. There's lots of ways to do that that I think the community benefits from.
Okay. All right, so I think that's, we're all in agreement there. What else we got?
Uh, yeah, well, thank you, board members. We'll communicate that to the town board as well, along with the sidewalk waiver.
Storage structure.
The only, we do, one thing I've noted to the applicant in the conversations leading up to this is they are, they, they would like to install an, a subdivision entrance monument sign. Currently, I don't see it on the plan, so that is something they'll have to show. My conversations indicate that they want to include it on Lot 1.
Okay.
And we'll see how that go, we'll, you know, we'll put that as part of our reviewing comments on this set of plans and get those back to the applicant. We did get, just so you guys see it and we can display it here. See if I can, see if this goes. They just showed us kind of a proposal, an exhibit of what it could look like.
That's gotta go to zoning, too, Zach?
If it complies with setbacks, no.
Okay.
It is just one of those deed restriction items, again, as long as it's completely on one lot. If it falls within the town's right-of-way at all, then you're going back to the town board for items, and then you're talking about district improvements that have to be maintained in the future. Where'd it go? Sorry, my speed is lagging now. Well, we can provide those details as they come in. So again, our engineers are looking at the plans right now based on this, this set from the May 22nd, along with their responses to comments. Our tabling resolution will include your discussion about waivers and the cul-de-sac. Overall, I guess, what are the board's thoughts on this project? You've seen it as a sketch plan, you've seen it in this final form now. You know, let's just kind of wrap up your thoughts.
Yeah. Besides the things we've discussed, what about the zoning board? When, when they have to go before them for the, the building structure?
Ah, thank you, yes. There is, there is the existing structure on the land that is proposed to be conveyed, preserved and conveyed back, conveyed to the Dume family. There is an accessory structure out there currently that they would need to get area variance for from the zoning board. In their responses that they gave us, they are planning to submit an application to the zoning board for this structure. It has not been submitted yet, but they are working on it. So prior to this, they were asking for, can the board adjust the setbacks using Town Law 278? I said, this is not what 278 is for, to, to grant it for that, so they are gonna go through the process with the zoning board on that.
Right.
The zoning board doesn't grant it, they either have to remove it or move the structure so it's in compliance.
Okay, I'm good with that. So we're just gonna leave it up to them? We don't have to do anything on that one?
No, it falls under zoning board jurisdiction.
Okay, yeah.
So we would make a condition in, in your ultimate resolution that documents that and puts that on the applicant, that they would have to do that before they get any final plan sign-off.
Okay.
I think that was all my concerns, so unless somebody else got some concerns.
Okay, let me quick to ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is everybody else good? Anybody have any comments or concerns?
I think there's none.
Okay, nobody raised their hand, so. Terry, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Direct staff to start an approval resolution?
Yeah, Zach, if you want to go ahead and make, move ahead with whatever.
Move to table and?
Yeah, and then I'll make the motion to the table at this point till the resolution's completed, I guess.
Yep, we'll start drafting that.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Kenauer? Lori? Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. So we're good there. What else we got? Zach?
That is all we have for this evening. There are no action items, no new business. We'll work on getting those minutes from the 14th done, along with these, and start drafting approvals and getting, getting the rest of the information that you requested of those projects for Starbucks and for this project, for Stafford Park.
All right. Sounds great. And with that, with there being no other business before us for the moment, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Thanks, applicants, staff, another great job, and have a great weekend. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.